Well, good evening or good afternoon, everyone. It's an early evening this week. Welcome to the May 13th, 2021 Special City Council Budget Workshop. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. City Clerk, will you please all the roles?
Mayor Kalnick.
Here.
Mayor Protem Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sastarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
We have four supplemental communications that were received. They've been distributed to council and made available to the public on the city's website.
All right. And we apparently do not have any members of the public on the call wishing to speak. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we do not have any email comments.
Okay, therefore, we will close any public comment period that we might have had. City Managers Report, City Manager Ingram, please give us overview of the
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council, Executive Team, Support Staff, and our community. As each of you will recall, at our strategic planning meeting in March, our Finance Director, Kelly Telford, reviewed the city's overall fiscal health and discussed the council reserve policy, the city's five-year financial forecast that will be presented at the May 25th CIP budget meeting, and key factors affecting our budget. I also discussed several changes that we have made to the city's budget process for fiscal year 2122 to provide for greater community participation, as well as additional enhancements to our budget document, including a new community survey, which we will highlight the results of at the May 25th budget meeting, a new community budget town hall meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, June 1st, a new budget webpage that includes an email for community members to submit questions and comments related to the proposed budget, and additional departmental performance indicators in the budget document. Last year at this time, I talked about the devastating and overwhelming impacts of the stay-at-home orders and economic shutdown, resulting in our need to reprioritize our goals, objectives, and priorities. As a result, we ended fiscal year 1920 with a significant budget surplus. Last year, I directed my team to present departmental budgets that preserved and maintained our excellent level of service to the community, and also maintained and preserved our staffing levels to provide those services. Each department head responded to that directive by making deep expenditure reductions in order to present you with a balanced budget for the current year without the use of reserves during an ongoing pandemic. So fiscal year 1920 and 2021 have been years where we have had to pull back significantly to ensure we didn't overextend ourselves financially because of ongoing revenue declines. But our goal now is to come out of COVID not the same as we were before, but even better. The focus of the proposed fiscal year 2122 budget was to identify what a post-COVID-19 environment would look like, with each department taking a solution-oriented approach that would not only restore services as we move towards reopening, but would also allow us to take strides to move forward. We are very encouraged to be presenting you with the draft fiscal year 2122 operating budget tonight that is balanced using available fund balance from last year's budget surplus as a result of all of those deep expenditure reductions in fiscal year 1920 and 2021. This budget represents the beginning of a transformation from budgets in several previous years where we were just simply trying to get by with the same programs and services year after year to where we are now, recovering from the pandemic and really wanting to build a better organization in order to better serve the public. The draft 2122 operating budget is comprehensive and solution-driven, and as promised, includes funding, general fund CIP projects for the first time out of projected revenue estimates without the use of general fund reserves. That's a significant accomplishment that should not go unnoticed. As you will see from tonight's presentation, this budget also includes rebudgeting for things that we were hoping to do before the pandemic, but also includes new solutions to challenges that departments of the community have experienced. This year's proposed operating budget also includes funding to address operational needs that were deferred as a result of COVID, including building and park maintenance, funding the Technology Replacement Reserve Fund for the very first time, as well as budgeting for the city's ongoing water and sewer utility costs. And as we prepare to reopen next month and begin moving towards a new normal, we want the council and the community to know that we are focused on all-around enhancements to customer service and our programs and services, as well as the completion of many of the projects that we were forced to place on hold now for quite some time. And this proposed budget will enable us to do just that. At this point, I would like to acknowledge our executive team members that are present on the Zoom meeting tonight. Assistant City Manager Patrick Gallegos, City Clerk Gloria Harper, Community Development Director Les Johnson, Finance Director Kelly Telford, Marine Safety Chief Joe Bailey, Police Chief Phil Gonshak, Public Works Director Steve Meider, and OCFA Division Chief Ron Roberts, as well as members of Chief Gonshak's command staff, Captain Mike Ezrow, Captain Michael Henderson, Lieutenant Julia Clasby, and Lieutenant Nick Nicholas, and Kelly's budget support staff, Finance Manager Elena Hong and Accountant Louis Lee. Especially want to thank and commend our executive team and their awesome support staff for working countless hours together for the benefit of our community during this ongoing unprecedented time and throughout the budget development process again this year. I also want to thank the council for your commitment of time, guidance, patience, and especially your unwavering support over the past year and during this process. And before I finally turn the presentation over to our Finance Director, I also want to especially thank and commend the Finance Budget Team who has guided us throughout this entire process and ensured that we implemented the vision of the council to enhance our overall budget development process and budget document. Of course, Finance Director Kelly Telford, Finance Manager Elena Hong, and Accountant Louis Lee. Kelly, Elena, and Louis have worked endless hours, seven days a week for the past several months, providing relentless guidance to me and each department head, and without a doubt burning the midnight oil at City Hall to finalize the proposed draft budget document that's before you tonight. Each one of them deserves a significant amount of gratitude and commendation for their dedication to our city and their invaluable financial guidance and leadership through another budget development process during an ongoing pandemic. Finally, these budget workshops are being held via Zoom again this year in order to continue to provide a safe environment for each of us in the community during the ongoing pandemic. And therefore, in order to ensure a productive and successful budget workshop tonight, I would respectfully request, Mayor, if that's agreeable with you, that the council allow Kelly to get through the entire presentation of the draft general fund budget, and then we will turn the presentation back over to you, Mayor, and council for questions, comments, and discussion. Kelly will be screen sharing so that you will be able to follow the presentation on your screen. It was also emailed to you by the city clerk prior to tonight's meeting, and then we will also upload the presentation to our website following tonight's meeting. So all of that to say, at this time, I will now turn the presentation over to our Finance Director, Kelly Telford. Kelly?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Thank you. All right. Let me attempt to screen share. All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and community members watching at home tonight. Tonight, we will be discussing the proposed fiscal year 202122 operating budget with a focus on the general fund. On May 25th, we will be going over the five-year forecast and proposed CIP plan, and on June 1st, we'll be having our first community town hall meeting, which will be in a webinar format. Also, in an effort to request input from the community, we have now issued a community engagement survey, which can be found on the homepage of the city's website. This is really intended to give us feedback on priorities from the community's perspective. To date, we have received 144 responses, and we'll continue to leave the survey open through the budget adoption process so residents can continue giving us their feedback. I'll go over the community survey a little bit more at our next budget workshop in a couple of weeks. So with that, let's begin discussing the proposed operating budget. Before we dive into the proposed budget, I first want to remind the council and the community where we have been over the last two fiscal years. As everyone is aware, the state issued the stay-at-home order for the COVID-19 pandemic in mid-March 2020. That was partially through fiscal year 1920, and at that time, we asked all of the departments to pull back to spend as little cash as possible to help offset the anticipated reduction in revenues. We were also right in the middle of the budget development process for our current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, and really, we didn't have much information on how deep the impact was going to be. So while we presented a budget last year without the use of reserves, this was only possible because the departments pulled back even further and deferred many of the items that were priorities before COVID. Last year, the focus was on maintaining services to the community and making reductions that did not affect personnel. As we moved into the 202122 budget process, we really looked at what the post-COVID environment was going to look like, and not just getting back to normal, but at doing better than normal. We took a solution-oriented approach to address operational challenges and challenges the community had been experiencing as well. Many of the projects and deferred items from prior years have been rebudgeted to allow us to get our facilities back in good condition and address priorities we wanted to address in prior years but could not. In this budget, you will also see the creation of a new internal service fund, the Information Technology Reserve Fund. This is the first time we've been able to achieve our reserve policy goal that was set forth a number of years ago. This fund will allow for the continuation of much-needed infrastructure improvements in technology, and going forward, all of our IT projects will come through this fund. So in a couple of weeks, when we talk about CIP at the next budget workshop, you will see that all of those capital projects have been moved, and they're now in this new fund. We've also incorporated the city's utility costs. This is something that was adopted or approved earlier this year at a council meeting, and going forward, the city is ensuring to account and pay for its own utility costs, estimated at nearly $200,000. And finally, as our city manager just pointed out, we have successfully incorporated $750,000 in CIP recommendations using fiscal year 2122 revenues. This will allow us to keep our reserves intact and available for future needs. Preparing this budget did not come without its challenges. While we are anticipating an 8% increase in revenues overall, some of our revenue streams are still struggling and are anticipated to remain below pre-pandemic levels. I've mentioned the deferred items from previous years, and this does include maintenance of our facilities. Another challenge that we're experiencing is the cost of construction. The pandemic has caused material shortages and an increase in demand for construction labor, both resulting in a sharp increase in the cost of construction overall, sometimes up to 50% or more. And then again, the goal of incorporating CIP costs within the current revenue estimates, this was no small feat, especially with nearly $1 million in CIP costs in this year's proposed budget. But again, expecting to do it without the use of general fund reserves. We also have unavoidable costs that we have to absorb into this new budget. We built in a 2% increase in base salaries for already negotiated contracts. On Wednesday, the CPI for April 2021 was released, and it's released at a 3.6% increase. Many of our contracts do include provisions for up to 4% increases. So we do have a small adjustment to the proposed budget of $100,000. Our team's going to go back before we bring this to you in June and see how we can incorporate that into the proposed budget. We're also seeing a 14% increase in CalPERS costs. A lot of this is because of the base salary increases. It's also because of increases in them funded liability and also increases in overall CalPERS estimates. We're seeing a 17% increase in insurance premiums. These are held in the city manager's department and includes the general liability, workers' compensation, and property insurance. The OCFA contract is increasing by 4.6% overall. This represents a 4.5% operational increase and a slight increase to the vehicle replacement reserve and the maintenance reserve. We're also still seeing increases in contract costs. These are for contracts that were already negotiated before the pandemic. Many of them have built-in increases. Some of them are tied to CPI. Some of them are maybe a 3% or a 5%, but we did need to incorporate those increases into this budget. So now that we've been reminded where we were for the last two fiscal years, and you can see some of our challenges in proposing this budget, let's go through some of the numbers. First, let's discuss revenues. Before we talk about the proposed 2122 estimates, I do want to briefly discuss the estimates for the current year, and this is in the column titled "Estimated Actual Fiscal Year 202021." If you recall, we really had no information about how deep of an economic impact we would see when we prepared the 2021 budget. We did our best based on the expertise of our advisors, and as you can see, we are projecting revenues for our current year in excess of what we originally had estimated by nearly $700,000. And this is good news. It shows the steady recovery from the closures, which we expect to continue as we move into fiscal year 2122. So now let's talk a little bit about 2122 estimates. As you can see, property tax is estimated to increase by nearly $900,000. This is because the 2% levy is anticipated to be put in place again. Property tax is one area where we have not seen a decline in revenues. Much of this is because property taxes on mortgages are traditionally impounded. We've been getting updates from the county, and we are seeing that the number of delinquencies has not increased as it was originally projected. We're also seeing that the median home sales price here in Seal Beach is continuing to go up. So that's all good news for our property tax revenue line. You can see our sales tax line, our traditional Bradley Burns, is expected to increase by $600,000, and our transaction tax from Measure BB is also expected to increase by approximately $800,000. Much of this is because of the community coming out and supporting local business and our local tourism from our surrounding communities who come to enjoy everything Seal Beach has to offer. We do expect to see these revenue streams continue to increase as we continue to recover from the economic downturn. Utility users' tax is seeing a slight increase related to the pandemic, and this is partially due to residents and businesses subscribing to streaming services. It's also because of services like Zoom, which we're utilizing tonight, where you still pay utility users' tax. In fact, the city has a number of Zoom accounts, and we also pay ourselves utility users' tax. One revenue stream that is struggling to come back is our transient occupancy tax. Our Finance Department has conducted a thorough analysis of this revenue stream and has projected both for the 2021 fiscal year and estimated for our next fiscal year, a slow increase. I think a part of this is due to some of our hotels just starting to bring back some tourism numbers, but I think it's also because those hotels also rely on businesses staying there while they're here on trips, and that is still very slow to come back. It does seem like our short-term rental market has come back. We're seeing an increase in those numbers. It's just the hotels are really struggling. And we've been a little conservative on the revenue estimate for 2122, mostly because we just don't know when businesses and really tourists are really going to get back out there and travel. Franchise taxes are a pretty steady revenue stream. These don't tend to fluctuate much. They're coming from Edison, SoCal Gas, and a couple of others. Our business license tax is one where we did see a decline during the current year. And we wanted to be conservative when we projected next year because we're really not certain how many businesses are going to close as a result of the pandemic. When we did our renewals back in June 2020, it was right at the peak of the closures in the early part of the pandemic, and we had a number of businesses who didn't renew. They didn't let us know they were closing. I really feel like they were likely waiting to see what had happened. They didn't want to file closure documents and not know... You guys hear me okay?
I can hear you, Kelly.
Okay, sorry. We weren't sure if those businesses were going to renew or not. So what we've done here is we've estimated a little bit low and are really working with the business community to get their licenses current and ensure that that revenue stream comes back. A big part of this, the reason this is an important revenue for the city, is because it ensures that the businesses are doing their part in paying for the services that the businesses are provided and that the taxpayers, our residents, are not paying for those services. Also, barrel tax, we spoke a little bit about this at the last study session when we were doing the 2021 budget. You can see that the revenue stream dipped a bit, and it's expected to come back up. And a lot of this is because we had that drop in demand because of the pandemic. But as all of us have seen, as we filled up our tanks, we're now paying more than $4 a gallon. So we do expect that the demand is going to continue to hold steady, and the revenue line will come back up. I'd like to walk you through a couple of the other overarching revenue streams. One of them is licenses and permits. You can see that we're anticipating just a slight decline, and really, this is because we're being conservative here. Right now, we're seeing a lot of permits being pulled for remodels for people's homes, and as people are going back to work and they're going back to the office, we're not sure how many are going to continue. So we've anticipated just a short decline in this revenue stream while we wait to see what happens. Our charges for services, this includes predominantly recreation-type of revenues. Recreation services weren't really happening during the pandemic other than those that were at the pool and the beach that were outside. So we saw the decline in 2021, but those programs are anticipated to come back online very quickly here. So we're expecting it to go back up. Under use of money and property, I do want to point out something that looks a little unusual, and I want to provide the council and the community with an explanation. Under use of money and property, if you look at the actual fiscal year 1920, this is our first column, the revenue was $1.7 million. And if we skip ahead to our proposed budget for 2122, the revenue is proposed at $650,000. The reason for this million-dollar difference is because at June 30th of each year, we are required to true-up our investment portfolio to market value, where the rest of the year, we hold it at cost. And if you think about this like your stock portfolio, your statement shows a cost basis and a fair value. And if you sold your whole portfolio on that day, it would yield an increase or a decrease based on that market value. It's very similar for the city. However, we cannot invest in stocks. We're required to invest in fixed income investments. So when we have an investment mature, we receive that basis, that original basis of it. In the other revenues line, I also want to explain the $3.2 million that you see under the actuals 1920 compared to the nearly $800,000 for the proposed budget. The reason for the high number in fiscal year 1920 is because of the revenues that we received, which were a reimbursement from the insurance company for the pier fire. We'll talk a little bit about this as we go through general fund fund balance, but that was one-time revenues, and we don't expect to get that as an ongoing stream. We do have additional claims that are out there, and we are waiting for payment on, but we don't want to budget for those because we're not sure when they're going to come in. And then finally, for transfers, the $106,600 estimate for 2122, this represents a reimbursement to the general fund for administrative costs. A lot of it is the Finance Department, the accounting that we provide to various funds, including our CFDs and including the SBTV fund. This slide is a very summarized representation of the recommended appropriations, and this is by category. We are recommending the appropriations for Personnel Services at $17.7 million, Maintenance and Operations at $19 million, and Capital Outlay at zero. And this is really just small items, maybe furniture, maybe small pieces of equipment that we usually see in this line item, so it's usually not very much. And then, of course, we've mentioned construction in progress being incorporated into the annual operating budget. We've estimated $750,000, which we'll go into much more detail at our next budget meeting, for a total proposed expenditures of $37.5 million. This slide goes into a little bit more detail. It shows the appropriations for the general fund by department. I'd like to point out some of the items that are included in the department budgets, particularly some new items that really do address some of the operational needs and some of the community needs as well, that we've really tried to incorporate as a step forward. Included in the City Managers and the Police Department budget is a new program, the Counseling Team International Peer Support Program, which will now be available for all city employees. And this will assist in counseling for any employees who have traumatic events, maybe something that happens in their personal life, but it's also there if they have a situation here at work that they would like a little bit of counseling to help them move through the process. We also have some funding budgeted for the implementation of our new financial software and our land management software. This is a small amount of consulting costs to help us complete the implementation. We also have costs that we've appropriated for us to be able to develop a new purchasing policy. We would like to bring in an expert in the purchasing field to be able to put best practices in place and really strengthen the city's procurement system. We also have funding appropriated to help us transition to a paperless environment. We're looking to image old plans that we have, that we've been holding on to for years and years, and not only have them available to us electronically, but really preserve them. Many of the plans that we have are on old paper that doesn't retain the ink. So they're getting to a point where we can't read them anymore. So many of our departments have incorporated imaging costs. We also have funding available for a grant writer. One of the things that I've been really working with Public Works on is being able to secure federal funding, being more competitive when we apply for grants to really help us utilize restricted funding sources rather than the general fund. And I know this is a high priority goal for the Public Works Department as well. They've also liked to conduct a speed study. This is something that's a good idea to do on a semi-regular basis. Hasn't been done in a number of years, so we've included funding to be able to do this in our major streets. For Marine Safety, we've incorporated new training software, which will allow us to continue to have our which will allow us to continue to have our lifeguards trained with the most updated safety protocols for our city's beaches. Also computer-aided dispatch software and, and new telephones for the tower that will better allow them to communicate amongst the lifeguards. And then the lifeguards are also looking at expanding their hours. At the pool has been very successful during the pandemic. And there's some additional hours in their part-time position budgets to be able to allow for that, should that demand continue. There's a lot more in, in these appropriations that are included in the budget detail pages that are in the proposed budget that you have before you. I encourage you to take a look at a lot of those details to really see the kinds of solutions that we're looking to provide. So in summary, we're proposing 35.5 million in estimated revenues. Thirty-four, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong column. $37 million in estimated revenues. $36.8 million in proposed operating expenditures. And again, we've incorporated $750,000 in CIP costs. Resulting in the proposed use of general fund available fund balance of $506,400, which is related to the cost savings from fiscal year 1920 and is allowing us to re-budget all of the items that were deferred in previous years so that we can move forward from the pandemic. I'd like to briefly touch on the uses of Measure BB. This is something that the council had asked of me about a year ago to really focus on when I started here in finance. Our team keeps a close eye on the uses of Measure BB. And every year we will add on so that we can ensure we're continuing to use it for the purposes of which it was intended. This slide shows the uses over the last three years. You can see a lot of it is for personnel, for public safety, for positions that we reinstated when Measure BB was, was put in place. A lot of capital improvement or technology improvements. And then also maintaining essential services, which you can see here as well. This shows you that Measure BB continues to do really good things here in Seal Beach and has enabled us to address many of the, the communities and the council's highest priorities. I'd like to spend a few moments talking about general fund, fund balance. And we'll talk a little bit more about this when we discuss our five-year forecast at the next study session. This shows three years of actual and anticipated fund balance for the general fund. But I'd really like to focus on the fund balance, the ending fund balance shown here. And also the classifications of our fund balance reserves. The city has a number of fund balance policies which are included in the general information section of the budget document. We have been able to maintain our fiscal policy reserve at 25% throughout the last three years. We also were able to maintain the economic contingency reserve. This is something the city manager and I had discussed a number of times, the potential for needing to use during the pandemic if we weren't able to reduce expenditures enough. But we were fortunate that we didn't need to and this has remained intact. There are also a number of other reserves related to capital projects. We have the Pierce, I'm sorry, the College Park East, the Pier Restaurant, Swimming Pool, ongoing capital projects, which represents capital projects that were approved in previous budgets that our public works department has not completed yet. There's also a small amount left over for, for street improvement projects. And then the other category here is related to compensated absences. It's really a financial statement requirement to have this here. It's not a necessarily a council policy. And then I'd like to point out our unassigned fund balance down here. You can see that over the last three years, we've declined from 3.8 to 3 million and now proposed at 2.8. But we do expect this to stop. A big part of why this number has declined over the years is because of budgeting CIP using general fund reserves. Last year, when we, when we discussed the budget challenges and at the council strategic planning meeting back in March, we talked about this being a focus of this budget cycle and trying to end this, this trend and really keep those unassigned fund balances intact. Now there's a fine balance of keeping this at a high enough level to be able to allow for just-in-case moments, but also not keeping it so high that we're not putting resources back into our community. This number is a good number. It allows us to be able to come to council and increase appropriations if we have one-time items that were unanticipated. But also isn't so much that we're not spending it on the things we really need to. Also included in this budget is a number of stacking staffing recommendations. When we make staffing recommendations, we really try to be thoughtful and ensure that we are utilizing resources in the best way possible. This year, we looked to provide solutions both from an operational perspective and to also provide solutions to external challenges. Very much looking at community concerns and, and ways to enhance the customer experience. In the community development department, it was a strategic goal for fiscal year 2021 for our community development director to take a look at his organization and make recommendations for improvements. And I'd like to invite our community development director, Les Johnson, to speak a little bit about his recommendations that you see here. Les?
Thank you Kelly. Mayor Council. There are currently two vacant positions in the building division of community development department. The building official position has been vacant for about three, three years, I believe. And the building inspector position has been vacant since November of 2019. We've been utilizing consultant services provided by TransTech to fulfill the work and responsibilities of both of those positions. TransTech also provides plan check review services for the city as well. Over the past few months, the assessment of the community development department staff resource needs has not simply focused upon replacing these two vacant positions. Not only is it important to have the correct positions identified and right staff in place, but we've also been evaluating how to be more efficient in our processes, improving external and internal communication as well as embracing new technology. The assessment has shown how critically important it is to our operations for Tyler Energov to be fully implemented and operational. This software will not only bring about necessary operational improvements, but will also impact staffing needs. Another core objective of the assessment done to date is to ensure the building division is sufficiently staffed to meet core operational needs while also realizing an ongoing dependence upon consultant resources. This ensures that resources can be properly adjusted based upon volume and activity without having to increase or reduce city staff. The personnel requests made for this fiscal year budget represents the first step in this assessment process. The addition of the senior inspector, plan checker position will provide a key staff member in the building division that can conduct inspections, provide a limited amount of plan check, over-the-counter plan check type services. And also be available to directly engage with and be of resource to the public. We get a lot of walk-ins or used to, or and we're expecting that once we reopen. And this position will be a key part to provide technical assistance to those that have questions. However, we will still need to rely upon our consultants, TransTech, to provide the vast majority of plan check reviews for building official assistance and as well as for assistance and support with building inspections. The number of hours and overall expense for that consultant assistance is expected to be reduced with the addition of this position, but not eliminated. The addition of an executive assistant dedicated to the community development department is also being proposed. This position has been shared over the last few years with public works. And until early 2020, there was also temporary admin, administrative support being provided as well. The lack of that support and sharing of that resource has been evident and is a challenge for the department over the past year or so. Having a dedicated executive assistant will be a great resource to the building, planning, code compliance and community services divisions of community development. Please note also that as we proceed with implementation of Tyler Energov, it's anticipated that additional staff resources will be necessary. It's been identified that there will be the need to have a staff person serving as the software administrator or super user for Tyler Energov. We anticipate this person to be based in the building division of community development who would be a resource for all using Energov software. That's including not only building, but planning, public works and finance as well. Staff will be prepared to address this at a later date as we move forward with implementation, which we anticipate doing during mid-year and are not requesting any additional staff resources at this time. So with that, that includes my brief summary and I'll turn it back over to you Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to invite our public works director, Steve Miter, to talk a little bit about the public works department's recommendations. Mr. Miter?
Thank you Kelly, mayor and members of the council. So we had a city electrician that recently retired. He was originally hired back in 1988. And of course, over the last 30 years, at that time he was charged with maintaining the traffic signal system, the electrical and control systems of the pump stations, the sewer pump stations, the wells, and of course, the city facilities. With the exception of the city facilities over the last 30 years, the, the pump station controls and electrical systems have evolved and become much more specialized and complicated. So what I was finding recent, over the last, my tenure here over the last four years is most of those functions have already been contracted out because of the complexity and the specialization. And it didn't really make, so when he, when this, uh, when the electrician retired, I took a step back and said, you know, this position really doesn't make sense in this day and age. It would make more sense and be more cost-effective to go ahead and do an on-call services contract with a large electrical firm that has all these specialty, all these specialty electricians under one roof. And that's essentially what we've been doing. I think we're just going to set up a contract now and make it much easier to procure these services. So on the flip side of this, over the last 30 years, the regulatory and state mandates have become much more rigorous than they have been over the last, it's been getting more and more rigorous in terms of compliance and regulation of the state of the city's water system, sewer system and trash collection, management of the trash collection contract. And if anything, these regulations and compliance measures have actually accelerated over the last five years. And there's more laws coming in the next two years, of which we will be very administratively taxing on our current administrations, our current structure. So the recommendation is we need additional skilled administrative staff to be able to properly stay with these compliance measures and making sure we are reporting correctly and in a timely manner. And therefore I'm recommending a management analyst in eliminate the electrician and take that resource and go ahead and go with a management analyst position to help us with the, the trend of regulatory requirements. And that is my, and I am now, that's, so I'll hand it back over to Kelly.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to point out for the public works department recommendation that anytime we have attrition or vacancies in a position, we really try as department heads to look at what the best use of our resources are. Just because we had a position in the past doesn't necessarily mean that that's the best choice moving forward. But just as Steve did for his department this year, this is something that I took a look at last year when I proposed the 2021 budget and recommended reducing the finance department FTEs by eliminating the account clerk. At that point in time, I had only been here for a couple of months and wanted some time to really assess what the best use of resources was in the finance department. At the time, the best use of resources was to add the management analyst position in the city manager's office. And that has shown that that was the good decision because we've been able to make a lot of progress on implementing, making strides towards implementing a lot of the city's IT projects. Now that I've had a chance to take a look at the resources that the finance department really needs, I am recommending the addition of a full-time financial analyst and a part-time office specialist. A full-time financial analyst would really focus on establishing a new purchasing policy and having the internal controls to ensure compliance with those policies. This is becoming more and more important as we compete for grant funding and do our best to comply with these federal regulations. We also see a need for that resource to provide budgetary support. Right now, we don't have a position in finance that is responsible for budget monitoring and also providing budget solutions. When the departments have challenges, the finance manager and myself are often tasked with trying to identify the best approach to solve the problems. But because we don't look at the budgets every day, it does take a bit of time to be able to come up with those solutions. Adding this resource solves both problems. And this is really becoming more and more important as we move towards the implementation of our new financial software. It has a lot of functionalities and capabilities, but if we don't utilize those, then we can't, we don't get the biggest benefit out of it. We also see the need for a resource that would provide really information. Think of it as an information czar of sorts. The community, the council and staff would be able to rely on this office specialist position for information related to everything Seal Beach, including how to get a permit, what events are happening in the city and all other questions that we receive every day. We are proposing this as a part-time position, again, as an office specialist. This really is a needed resource to provide that top-level customer service to our community and to enhance the experience for those who come here to City Hall. Finally, I'd like to invite Chief Gonchar to speak a little bit about the police department staffing recommendations. Chief Gonchar?
Thank you Kelly. Good evening, mayor, city council member, city manager, all city staff and any member of the public tuning in this evening. And only the Seal Beach Police Department develops a vision statement to ensure the desires of our community are in line with the goals of our police department. In doing so for the year 2021, we developed the CARES Vision Statement acronym. As most of you know, the C stands for community traffic safety, A for always listening and learning, R for responsiveness to quality of life issues, E for enhancing partnerships with residents, businesses and visitors. And then S strengthen already established relationships with MAGA students and faculty. With this, approximately six months ago, MAGA staff and PTA members felt that members of the Seal Beach Naval Weapons Station weren't getting the proper amount of crossing guard guidance across the intersection of Bolsa and Seal Beach Boulevard due to its large capacity of an intersection and then only having one crossing guard in the area. Because of this, they asked kindly if we would be willing to consider and then adding another crossing guard to our already staffing model as it relates to that particular area of our staff. After analyzing the traffic flow and a number of the students crossing that area, we agreed that further by adding this part, possibly a part-time position at such a minimal estimated cost of only about $15,000, we would be not only fulfilling their request, but two of our categories under the community traffic safety and strengthening MAGA relationships model for the year. So with that, we only have one staffing request and that would be adding the crossing guard there for at MAGA elementary. That's all I have. Thanks Kelly.
Thank you Chief Gonchar. I want to provide a financial overview of what those staffing recommendations mean from a dollars perspective. The community development department's recommendations would eliminate two full-time positions and replace them with two full-time positions. That net would result in a decrease in personnel costs of $63,000. Because some of the, the responsibilities are anticipated to remain with our consultant, we would need to increase consulting costs. We've estimated a little bit high at $120,000, but we want to make sure that we are able to show the production and the result of being able to provide that better level of service to the community. So the net increase in total costs is $57,000. I should point out too, that those consulting costs will fluctuate each year based on the amount of work that our community development department has. But that does allow us flexibility in years where development is a little bit slower. We don't have to incur those additional costs. The public works department recommendation, again, to eliminate The Public Works Department recommendation, again, to eliminate the full-time electrician and add the full-time management analyst is a near break even at an increase in personnel costs of $3,000. But it really does enable the Public Works Department to utilize those resources in their, in the best way possible. The Finance Department recommendation of adding a full-time financial analyst would increase personnel costs by $143,000. And the part-time office specialist is under $20,000 and is anticipated to be part-time more than likely between nine and four each day for a total increase in personnel costs of $162,300. I do want to note that when you look at your budget binder under the personnel summary, a couple of years back, our personnel numbers were at eight FTEs. This would increase it to 8.6. We just had that temporary decline from last year that I talked about. And then again, the police recommendation for the crossing guard has an increase in personnel costs of $15,000. I do want to point out a few additional items before we conclude the presentation. Again, a reminder about our community engagement survey. We'll be discussing the results at the next budget workshop on May 25th, when we discuss our five-year forecast and the CIP recommendations for next year. Our first community town hall meeting is scheduled for June 1st, and this is going to be held in a webinar format. This will allow our community to participate and submit questions online. Our community members can also submit questions via email prior to that date by emailing budget@sealbeachca.gov. That email address can also be found on the city's website under the Finance Department in case we aren't able to get it written down tonight. I also want to point out that this budget includes changes that will be coming to council later this summer related to our cost allocation plan. When I first got here, I was made aware, particularly during our water and sewer rate study, that our cost allocation plan was likely outdated and may not follow best practices that are very common today. I've worked very closely with our consultant over the past year and really feel confident that the cost allocation plan that we've included is comprehensive, it is reliable, and it's defendable. I believe that we've used very reasonable cost estimates, cost allocation bases. It did result in an increase in the water and sewer fund for the cost allocations that you see in the budget book. But that's because it is now including non-personnel costs like IT and legal, which weren't previously included at the levels they are today. Our consultant is also working on the citywide fee study. Because the project is so large, we've decided to break it into two parts. Right now, they're finishing up the Community Development Department and Public Works Department fees. Those will be coming to council for consideration later this summer and we'll likely schedule another study session to go through all of that. Following that later this year will be the rest of the citywide fee schedule, which will include the Police Department, lifeguards and the rest of our departments. I also want to point out that the new water and sewer rates that were approved and went live May 1st will be deferred just slightly and our residents will not be seeing those on their utility bills until July 1st. Part of this is because of our Spring Brook software, which is very old and some challenges with being able to handle two sets of rates. But it's also because we didn't have a way of doing a mid-cycle read without having any, having the newer technology meters, those smart meters. Our current meter reader goes out and reads every single meter in the city over a span of two months. And being able to do that in such a short period of time to go do a mid-cycle read as of May 1st just wasn't feasible. So we did make the decision to defer that until the first full cycle under the new rates, which would be July 1st. I'd also like to point out that in your budget binder on page 11, you will notice that we have consolidated the Water Operating and Water Capital Fund and Sewer Operating and Sewer Capital Funds. And this is because the new rate structure does not have a capital component to it. Therefore, we are consolidating the funds into one effective June 30th, 2021. This will cause a little bit of an interesting look when you look at the estimated 2021 numbers. You'll notice in the Public Works Department that there are some pretty large increases in maintenance and operations. You'll also notice that in the revenue side, underwater and sewer operations, there's a very large transfer in. And this is just one time and it represents the closure of those funds and moving them into the operating fund. And then finally, you'll also notice that we don't have any vehicles being proposed out of our vehicle replacement fund. As I mentioned during our last budget cycle, we are currently undergoing an analysis of the fleet. This includes public safety and non-public safety vehicles. It has taken just a bit of time, but we are almost completed with it. And this really was to analyze whether or not it made more sense financially for us to lease vehicles versus purchasing them. That analysis is almost complete and we anticipate being able to bring that to council a little bit later this summer as well. So keep an eye out for that and we'll likely do another study session there to allow the council and the community to really dive in and understand that. But just want to point out a few final takeaways. This budget does propose using 506,000 in available fund balance from the general fund. And this is using fiscal year 1920 savings, which allows us to address many of the items that were deferred in the two prior fiscal years. It includes funding the Information Technology Replacement Reserve for the very first time by creating that new Internal Service Fund. It includes funding for the payment of the city's utility accounts totaling nine, I'm sorry, $195,000. And it incorporates $750,000 in CIP recommendations using fiscal year 2122 revenues, not general fund reserves. So I know that was a lot of information, but I'm going to hand it back to our mayor so that we can be available for any questions. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So we now have the proposed operating budget and will now ask for council member comments. So let's start with Councilmember Vera Pop. Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you for that great information on the budget. It was very comprehensive. I'm still digesting the whole package, but I'd like to go back to page 12, if we may, please. I just had a couple of questions on that. I believe it was 12. Yeah, that one. When we do the classification of fund balance, are those assigned, you know, like how far or how long ago were they assigned? Are they, do they just go into preparatory duty or they keep going? Or do they run out or how do we go about capturing that money and classifying?
That's a very good question. If you will entertain me for just one moment, I am going to go into another worksheet, and I should have had this open, my apologies, that actually shows the history of our projected fund balance. And you can see where many of those reserves come from. And if you'll, you'll allow me a moment, I want to tell a little story as we look at this worksheet. So the City Manager and I utilize this worksheet as a tracking mechanism to understand the ebbs and flows of fund balance. You can see here in this column, the total fund balance over the past 20-plus years. Back in 2001, which is as far back as our financial system goes, we had $6.8 million in general fund fund balance. And we did a really good job increasing that fund balance over the years, all the way up until 2009. From what I've been able to gather, it appears that there was a change in fiscal policy in 2009. And I think there were two reasons. It sounds like there was some community pressure, perhaps the perspective that we had accumulated too much fund balance. And perhaps the community felt like that money should be put back into the community, whether it's improvements in certain areas or certain projects. They wanted it spent. But we also had a change in financial reporting requirements. And this was a new GASB that we had to implement. And the new GASB said you couldn't earmark money unless it was formally committed by resolution or ordinance. So what I suspect happened is those two pressures caused the Finance Department to make a recommendation to commit some of the fund balance. And this is where you see some of these new ones coming up. $477,000 for College Park East, $5 million for the swimming pool, $4 million for street improvements, 4.7 for storm drains, 1.9 for buildings, and then $5 million for the new fire station. Those, that's where the reserves were really created. And they were not removed until they've been spent. So we've spent some of those, storm drains, buildings and fire station. But these three, College Park East, Swimming Pool and Street Improvement, still remains. College Park East is still at its original value of $477,000. We still have the swimming pool commitment, which we're obviously, we're still talking about that project and really looking to move forward with it and make a recommendation in the near future. And then there's just a little bit left over for street improvements. But yes, until council were to formally make a recommendation to utilize the reserves, either through appropriation or a recommendation to change what they're intended for, they do remain intact. So these have been there for a bit since 2009. I think that's 12 years, 13 years? 13 years. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, and I think, I don't have to, you know, tell you, but the, obviously the buying power from 10 or more years ago is a lot different than the, you know, the buying power now. And I think, you know, it behooves the council to look, you know, to move these projects as long as, you know, as quickly as possible. I mean, taking, taking the swimming pool, for example, it went from $5 million and we've slowly been chipping away at it. And meanwhile, the cost of construction and services are going up. Even though it's in my district, doesn't mean I have, you know, complete control of that per se. But I think as a, the council in its entirety needs to take a, you know, a close look at that and kind of come to some type of conclusion. And I would say the same would be true for street improvements. And the College Park East, I mean, it's not in my district per se, but I think it benefits the community as a whole. And for us to sit on that money for 10 years plus is not doing anybody any good. And I'm not sure what it was earmarked for. I'm sure I'm in complete agreement for what it was and maybe that's a discussion for a later time. But I think for it to sit there, and same with the street improvements and, you know, all these. And now we have included the Pia Restaurant in that mix too. I think it's important that we, we stress upon ourselves that we need to come to some type of conclusion to zero those out in some way and have a project because we're losing money here, basically is the bottom line. And it doesn't matter where the project is, but like the College Park East, is that earmarked for a specific project or an item or what's, what's the holdup with that? I know you're obviously fairly new and, but I would just ask in general, what is the holdup in a project for $477,000? You know, in 2009, that was probably a lot to do, a lot of, you know, to work with. $477,000 doesn't get us much now. And in another 10 years, it's going to be even less. Is there, is there something that you know? I'm just curious now, as a, as a resident and a council person, what is that earmarked for and what's the plan on that? I mean, maybe you may or may not know that, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Sure, that's a very good question. And you're not, you're not wrong on all three of those. If I could, before we get to that College Park East piece, you're absolutely correct, particularly with the swimming pool. Our Public Works Director recently found a study that was done back in 2008, I believe, right before this reserve was set up. And it was anticipated that that $5 million, I think the estimate was 4.8 actually. But that's where we believe this $5 million came from. It was a reasonable number back in 2009. But you're correct, the buying power of $5 million from 2009 is not the same as the buying power of $5 million in 2021. Ironically, particularly because of the cost of construction going up as much as it has. We have done some recent research on this College Park East Reserve. City Manager Ingram, would you mind chipping in just a bit and provide some assistance in explaining what this reserve is utilized for?
Absolutely. And then what I'd like to do is ask Councilmember Sus Starsick to back me up on this because this funding source was before my time. So I'm speaking on my understanding of it. But actually, I believe there was a million dollars that was part of a settlement agreement prior to the timeframe that you're seeing on this spreadsheet. And about half a million dollars was spent prior of, by a former council member of College Park East at that time for improvements to the tennis center. And he chose to spend, work with city staff to make some facility improvements there, which is leaving us now with a balance of the 477. And my understanding is this is really money that's supposed to be utilized for the benefit of the entire College Park East community. So it doesn't necessarily need to be spent at the tennis center. And I believe, and Shelley can talk about it briefly if she'd like. It sounds like there was an effort for some public outreach to talk about residents and what they saw as a vision for spending that money. I know at one time, through another previous council member, there was discussion and we did look at potentially providing some sort of a, like a prefab building that would serve as a restroom at a park in College Park East. And I know a previous chief of police was not, was not thrilled, not supportive of that idea as a result of potential public safety issues that he perceived that might create. And so that didn't go anywhere. And to my knowledge, there's really been no further discussion about this item. So Shelley, if I, if you'd like to provide some feedback, you might have some more history on this. Again, this was prior to my time with the city and so I don't, that's basically what I know.
Yeah, Jill, that's, that's what, basically, you're correct. Originally, there was money that was planning, planning at the tennis center. And then about approximately half the money was spent improvements on the tennis center. The money was determined that it was to be used there, but not, not just, just at tennis center, but for the benefit of College Park East community. City Councilman Gary Miller was trying to get a restroom because basically that's what he was hearing. If you talk to people with the kids at the park or whatever, they indicated that a restroom at Heather Park was what they wanted. And he tried to move forward with that, but as you said, there, there's pros and cons, you know. You have to have somebody come and lock and unlock, there's safety issues. And so that ultimately wasn't done. I originally, you know, planned to use it also for park improvements, but at the moment, I, you know, I, because our last freeway project had some things that OCTA did not complete, I'm tended to wait just a couple more years to see this freeway project get completed and make sure that there's, I mean, I, it's within my best intro, push to make sure that they, they do whatever they, they have promised to do. But in case there's any sort of situation created, that's a annoyance or some some kind of problem or something that doesn't get done. That's what I would, I think, would be in the community's best interest at the moment. But, you know, whatever we can discuss. But I, so that's why I'm I'm suggesting that we wait just another couple of years to until the freeway project is completed.
Councilmember Vera Papa, did that answer your question?
I think it answered some and created some others. But not to dwell on 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 this topic. I think we have a fiscal responsibility to to earmark that money and and to try to move forward. You know, two years seems like a long time, but I think maybe that's another discussion and another time. But I did have have another question on page fourteen, I believe it was, on your sheet. When you were talking about vacant positions, I think Mr. Johnson was talking about when he came on board, there were vacant positions. Was that in the building inspector? Am I, did I hear that right? Or the building official or what what position was that?
It's actually both, the full-time building official and full-time building inspector positions have been vacant since since both of us have been here.
So we're just basically catching up in those two two positions.
Yeah, so essentially, those have been outsourced. Since they've been vacant, we've been utilizing consulting services to perform those functions. Based on his assessment, he feels it is a better use of resources to convert those positions to a senior building inspector, which is kind of a hybrid of the two and a full-time executive assistant. And then keep some of those functions with our consultant. And that would allow for an enhancement in the the customer service and the amount of work that they're able to get done in community development.
Yeah, yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. And then the public work recommendation of the management analyst?
Yes.
That's more than an electrician, I guess, is that?
Yes, just slightly. And and I'm glad you brought that point up because one of the things that I I forgot to mention when I got to this slide is that there will still be some electrician costs. You know, if we don't have an electrician on staff, we're still going to have situations where we do need to bring an electrician in. And those costs fluctuate every year, just depending on maintenance things that happen. But since the electrician position was vacated back in December, I went back and took a look at how many instances we had of outsourcing to an electrician. And and there have been three, two of which were for our new city kiosks that are at the police department and here at City Hall. And that work wouldn't have been able to be done by our electrician because the kiosks are a little bit specialized. And then the third instance was to fix a lighting issue out at the tennis center. And again, would not have been able to do to be done by the electrician position that we previously had. The the positions are relatively close in salary, which is why you see just the small change. I think they're in different bargaining units. I think that's probably part of the reason for it.
Just for clarity, what does the management analyst do? And like, does someone go to school for that? Or else that, I mean, how's that work? I mean,
That's a very good question. A management analyst position is one that you find throughout government. And and really think of those those folks as jack of all trades. Anything that is project-related, ad hoc requests. It takes a very high level of analytical abilities. It also takes project management ability. And it does require a degree to hold that position, a higher level of education. Most of the management analysts throughout our industry are specialized. This position, the Public Works Director is anticipating bringing in someone who who does have public works management analyst experience. So they would likely have specialized training in in waste. A lot of the new state mandates that are coming out, they would have experience in water and all of the reporting requirements. It's much more than, you know, a a normal administrative staff. This person is is almost, you know, quasi-manager level, the the amount of of independent thinking that they're required to do. Good question.
Kelly, Kelly, I would just add to that, that typically council, you're going to see with a a management analyst position that they're going to, in most cases. I believe we require a bachelor's degree, but we we desire someone who has a master's degree because that's really the level and especially in public administration, because that's really the level of critical thinking and analysis that we're looking for for this particular position. And usually, they're on a track. I mean, they're usually looking and because they are a generalist and and doing work and, you know, all departments supporting the city, they may be on a track to become a department director. And then a deputy, you'll see, you know, a a line to deputy city manager, assistant to the city manager, assistant city manager, maybe even a city manager. So it's really a general position that you're going to see in 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 pretty much every city. Kelly called it a jack of all trades. I prefer to call it Jill of all trades, but 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 really, an important position and and functions at a completely different level than some of your entry-level support staff positions would.
And if I could add one more piece to that, just to pick on our assistant city manager a little bit. Our assistant city manager was a management analyst and his trajectory was very similar to what Jill is mentioning. He was a generalist, learned just about everything he could and is now our assistant city manager here and is overseeing many of the the critical functions like HR and IT, as well as everything else that gets thrown at him.
Great, great. And then on the bottom of that sheet, if you can scroll up, please.
Are you looking for, oh, this one?
Yeah, I think the part-time crossing guard is an excellent use at that intersection. I I kick myself for not thinking of it myself. But that is well needed. And I think that's a going to be a great addition to the school and to the public for that. So thank you. And that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's back to you.
I was muted. Thank you, Mike. Councilmember Sustarsik, your questions or comments?
Um, I I actually submitted some questions in writing and I'd like to thank the the treasurer for answering those questions for me. So I, at the moment, I don't have any left right now, so I will come back later if I do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Masalavet.
I'm looking through my notes here. They were mostly answered the other day. The part-time executive existent in finance, and then there's the position of part-time office specialist is eighteen thousand eight. Are they getting paid fifteen dollars an hour? Is that your projection?
We're we're currently estimating this position anywhere between fifteen to twenty dollars an hour. This position isn't currently in our salary schedule. It is something, if approved, we'll bring back to be able to incorporate. We're doing a little bit of market analysis. Right now, we are bringing in some part-time help as we prepare for reopening. That person on a, you know, on a temporary basis would very much do what this position is anticipated to do. So yes, it's somewhere in that ballpark and it's about, I think it was twenty hours a week, if I recall.
And the financial analyst, is that fully burdened, that hundred and forty three thousand?
It is.
Okay, could you scroll down then to the, what was it, the community development? Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Now, how much of the senior building inspector and the increase in consulting services? How will that be offset? The, we're paying now for, we will be paying for a senior building inspector. And but we're eliminating a building inspector and a building official. So that salary savings is going to pay for the senior building inspector, but it's also going to increase the consultant contract for services that we need when we need them. And how is that going to be offset?
So the net increase of fifty seven thousand is incorporated into the budget using revenue estimates for twenty one, twenty two. But I'll give you a little bit of a preview of what to expect when we bring back the citywide fee study recommendations. One of the things that we're seeing with community development and and some some of public works as well is that some of the fee structures are not full or in a lot of cases, not even near full cost recovery. Which that means is that our taxpayer dollars are subsidizing all of the administrative costs of things like plan check. And that's just an example. So what we're looking at doing when we bring back our citywide fee study, there will be a realized increase in revenues if that is approved and implemented. The fifty seven thousand we are proposing to absorb into our revenue estimates. So yes, it's an increase in costs, but we are not recommending using reserves for that. But we do believe that this, plus some of the other recommendations that our community development director is likely to make as we complete the implementation of EnterGov, will be paid for with those revenues generated from recommended fee increases.
We haven't been collecting administrative costs in our current fee schedule?
We have. The challenge is that our our current fee schedule has not kept up with the cost of providing those services. So what we're looking to do is bring back a fee study every three to five years, very similar to our water and sewer rate study and really keeping on schedule to ensure that the fees are achieving close to full cost recovery, particularly those that are not paid by our residents, costs that are paid by developers or contractors who do work here in our city. We really want to relieve the burden on our taxpayers.
Yeah, I get that. In terms of the finance department in this office, what I call information clerk, office specialist, you're calling it. For if they're going to work from nine to four, is that a is that considered part-time?
It is with an hour lunch.
Yeah.
And we're toying with the idea of not having it on Fridays. In the finance department, you know, we see the the majority of of the customers that come in the door unless they're going upstairs to have plans reviewed. And Fridays tend to be a slower day, so we're toying with the idea of Friday or no Friday. But right now, it's Monday through Thursday, nine to four with an hour lunch.
Okay, so you've got it built in right now that you're not going to have them there on Friday?
Right now, we are. It's it's likely that we're going to have a delay in in recruiting for this position. So even if we were to add on that Friday, we'd be able to absorb that cost into the budget, just from salary savings.
Very often, it's the entry-level people that are the most important. And because they do a lot of the grunt work. And this office specialist is going to need to be able to know about a lot of things about the city. And you know, it's going to be a real specialized person that that can pick up and be able to know enough about each department and what's going on in everywhere in the city to be able to let people know who are calling in. I'm I'm just wondering if part-time is adequate. But I am willing to to consider that part-time initially might work. I'd like to see how it works. And but I'm looking at it to be a full-time person, eventually. But that's what I'm thinking right now, anyway.
I I appreciate that. And and you bring up a very good point. This position, I had sort of used your your information title and used information czar of sorts. But they very much, we need, we need two very specialized attributes for this individual. We need the utmost level of customer service. And we also need someone who will take the initiative and will will be able to understand all of the functions that we have here at the city and what each department does. I mentioned them knowing all of the events that are happening in the city. Right now, the finance department, primarily my accountant and my accounting manager, are answering the city's phones. And that really is because of the pandemic and and because my team has been here. This is my budget team. We've been here every day. So it's easier for us to commit to answering the phones along with staff from our city clerk's office. But the calls that we get when I have filled in on answering the phones, I I can give you an example. Someone wanted to know if they were able to have a wedding on the pier. And and I didn't know the answer. I really stumbled for a moment and, you know, used my customer service experience and said, you know, hold on just one moment. I'm going to get that answer for you. And luckily, Chief Bailey was available and was able to answer my question. But this person is going to need to understand and and really take that initiative to learn it. But that will result in such an increase in the level of customer service that our community can expect from us. And that's really what the goal of this position is.
And I know in some cases, some people are yearning for an increase in customer service. I know that there just aren't enough people to go around to be able to do that adequately for everyone's needs. But this is really, I think this will be a great start in terms of supplying. And, you know, I'd like, I'd like you, and I know you will, keep an eye on it and and determine whether or not it needs to go to a full-time person.
Yeah, I really, you're very right. I'd really like the opportunity. And this isn't a, even though it's under the finance department, this is not only a finance department recommendation. We all spoke about this at the executive level. The city clerk's office, the city manager's office and the finance department have talked about this position at length and how necessary it is. And and we agree, we would like to see it at full time. And as we as we come out of the pandemic and we reopen City Hall, I think a a trial of sorts would be would be the best approach and would allow us perhaps at mid-year to come back with a recommendation. I'd really like to see the success of this, and I think the community will see that as well. And and if if we see that, I'd like to bring this back for consideration at full time and at mid-year. But but let's, if it's approved, let's let's show our our value before we make that recommendation. But thank you for your support. I I very much agree.
Yeah, one last thought. On the east side, we're all north Seal Beach, four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. I understand what Councilmember Sustarsik is saying about the money and waiting a couple more years. It's just going to be worth less than two years, then it will be worth. It's just gonna be worth less than two years than it will be worth now. And I sure like to see that money spent. And if we have to put in uh some sort of a permanent bathroom at Heather Park, I don't know if four hundred and seventy-seven thousand would even pay for it. But I think we need to come up with use for that money sooner rather than later. Um of course, I'll go along with whatever council member Sastarsik chooses to do. But I would encourage um spending that money soon. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilman Moore, your comments and questions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A few key things that I want to just say I really appreciate about the budget, uh I was glad to see the separation of the the allocating IT fund uh separate going forward. I I think that's really great, and I think it's needed to keep up with the technology, with the latest phone systems and technology to help improve uh the efficiency for the city. And being able to do things like apply for building permits and business licenses online versus waiting in a line at the City Hall is just a few examples. Um I also think it's good that we are moving the CIP to use the operating budget. I think that's a key thing that Kelly and uh Jill did in the, with the budget, and I think that's a great uh change going forward. Also, I appreciate the survey that went out to the community. Um I I sent it out in my newsletter and I I think that's a great way to get feedback for the budget and also the additional of the town hall. Uh this budget cycle, so I I look forward to hearing feedback from both of those. Uh a a few questions. What are the uh a few of the biggest unexpected outliers over the past year? And is there anything we did not expect? And how, is there anything that we should be worried about this year?
I'll be honest, I think the things that happened that I wasn't expecting um were more positive than they were negative. Uh here in finance, we truly were preparing for the worst. Um we were ready to uh see great recession level revenue drops. Um because nobody had, none of us had been through a pandemic. Um after we did our revenue estimates for twenty-twenty-one, um it it was a wait-and-see game. And as we started to see those revenues come in in the late summer, we were very optimistic. Uh and we went through a a little bit of panic when we saw the closures again during the the December timeframe. Um I think, just like everybody else in this, in the state and and the country, um we thought the closures were over and uh we had talked last year from an economic perspective about the different types of recovery. We talked about big V, little V, the swoosh. Uh and we were prepared for uh that big downturn and then, you know, the swoosh, the slow and steady recovery and we weren't expecting the W, the another de- decline. Um but, you know, our community really has come out in support of local business and um as a city, we are uh lucky to to be able to to see those impacts in our sales tax. Um and we're seeing those increases. The one thing that I'm still worried about is occupancy tax um from our hotels. I do think it will come back, but the pandemic did change how people live. Um so so I don't know how long it will take those revenue, that revenue stream to come back up to pre-pandemic levels. It could be a couple more years. Um that really will just, we'll just have to wait and see. The other thing I wasn't prepared for, and I don't think we've seen it yet, is uh the increase in um some of these operating costs for contracts. We mentioned a little bit about the con- the cost of construction going up, and that's likely to have a little bit of a trickle effect um for some of our maintenance contracts as well. Um but I think we're doing very well. Uh I am very fortunate to be the finance director of a city like Seal Beach uh where we have great support and we really have tried to to come together and provide solutions. Um so there's not a lot that's terrifying me, but I'm still being cautiously optimistic.
Okay. And uh I know you're working on the three-to-five-year uh forecast. Is, will that be available at the next meeting or?
Yes, so in the budget book, uh and it's not, it's not presented uh as a part of the operating budget proposal that's on the website and and in the council budget binders right now. But we will have a two-page layout that will show the, a five-year history and a five-year forecast of where we expect our future to go. It will be organized very similar to what you see on page, give me just one moment. Page twenty-five in your binder. Um and it will be organized by uh by account for the general fund. So I'll have that published before we have our next study session, and we're gonna start the next study session with the five-year forecast.
Okay, great. Have you, have you thought about pension? Uh the pension reform, ha- uh coming up with some method or strategy to deal with ongoing increasing pension costs?
I have, and that is probably one of our biggest challenges from a long-term perspective. Um that and capital improvement projects. Um. One of the things that I've included in the finance department budget is some additional funding for assistance from our financial advisor to help us develop a funding plan to address the pension uh liabilities. Um I think this is really the best approach to be able to address it. Um it's, it's likely gonna be small bites at the apple. But what I would like to do is to work with our financial analyst to do a comprehensive evaluation with our CalPERS representative. Um we actually speak with our actuary on a cup, on a quarterly basis to work with CalPERS to develop a funding plan that allows us to pay down those liabilities and save the city money. So over the course of the next year, um I would anticipate bringing that, those options back to council for consideration. And that would have a long-term impact. Uh developing a funding plan requires a commitment. It requires us to incorporate those in future budgets in order to reduce those liabilities.
Okay, did you read?
Yeah, I just, okay.
Any other questions, Tom?
Yes, uh why, why should the why is the jail operations the same cost? Should this adjust to another area?
That's a very good question, and I asked the same question. Um and and once I asked our chief to explain that to me, um I it made perfect sense because our jail didn't close, it just changed how it operated. Uh so to put our chief on the spot, if he doesn't mind, Chief Gonshak, would you mind assisting with this question?
Certainly. So the uh councilman, good question. The, the reason that the jail actually costs the same as it relates to personnel and staffing is relatively speaking, we didn't shut down the jail. What we did was what we call reclassification. So if you remember back in, uh I believe September, October of last year, when the department reorganization plan was put in place, we went from what's called a type-one jail facility to a temporary holding facility. And in short, what that means is our staff doesn't now have to be in the jail one hundred percent of the time uh with the liability hanging over our head of full-time federal inmates, full-time work-for-low inmates, and full-time pay-to-stay inmates. Instead, our jail staff is now being uh used as more of utility batters where we have them out in the field handling everything from parking complaints to uh substituting for our crossing guards, as well as in our uh records bureau assisting with records and filing. And then lastly, assisting um our property and evidence uh bureau. When they're not doing all of those other facility uh movements for our organization, they assist with transporting and booking as well as um inputting the data for every arrest that we make out on the street. And what that does is it, it prevents our police officers from having to be tied up every time they do arrest somebody. And now the senior CSOs that we took from out of the custody facility are now actually on the streets and can respond to the arrest or the the place of the crime and transport that individual back to our custody facility, complete all the paperwork for our staff, book them, put them in the computer system, take their photograph, do their fingerprints, and then either cite them out of our facility uh here at the the station or transport them back down to the Orange County Jail or probation or parole or wherever they need to be transported to. So in essence, our our staffing costs remain the same, and if you remember, we were going to try and offset some of this by having them assist with um our lapse in parking uh enforcement related to primarily that of uh the evening and early morning hours. Uh so I don't wanna go into too much uh informations, it'll take a long time to re-explain the the department reorganization plan, but in essence, we never had a nighttime parking uh team, and so then those individuals were then spread throughout the organization to cover nighttime parking complaints that our patrol officers were having to handle as well. So they're used more as a utility batter and they still cost the same. With that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions you got.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Moore, if I could add just one tiny smidge to Chief Gonshak's explanation. When I asked that question during our budget meetings, I did wanna ensure that that um we, my estimates um back when Chief Gonshak proposed his department reorg, I prepared a comprehensive cost analysis of cost increases, cost reductions, revenue estimates, and the proposed budget you see before you tonight is in line with what we had uh estimated back when he proposed his reorg last fall.
Okay. On the um page thirty-five of our packet for appropriations, there's a large increase in risk management for an additional three hundred thirteen thousand. Is that something that's going to continue to increase at that rate, or is that a one-off for this year?
Uh I do think that is likely to be a one-off for this year. We do normally see increases in our premiums, our insurance premiums. But we've, we've talked a little bit uh behind the scenes of what CJPIA is seeing. And CJPIA is an insurance pool that the city participates in, um where we pool our risk. Um so we don't necessarily pay dollar for dollar uh any of the claims that the city incurs. Um all of the members of the pool pay, and we help pay for other cities uh claims. But what we've, what we've seen uh during the COVID-nineteen pandemic is that the types of claims have shifted slightly. Um they're a little bit more unusual than what we had seen in the past. So CJPIA is likely um increasing their reserve estimates in order to be able to uh address some of this unusualness. The way that they work is they give us an estimate for the insurance premiums, and then at the end of the year, we have a true-up where some years the claims of the pool were more, so we have to, we have to pay a little bit more to CJPIA. And some years they're, they're less, so we essentially get a credit back. So I do think that that this large increase is a just-in-case, but I I do think that um we're gonna have to just wait to see what happens as we, as we move into the next fiscal year um to see if those types of claims have changed. So it's, it's likely uh the the large increase is likely just for next year. But we will expect them to increase in the future as well.
It's not related to the peer uh reimbursements?
No, it's not. Um again, uh all of the the members of the pool shared in our claim, had we been self-insured and purchased um excess insurance uh where where the city is only a member, I I can tell you for certain that our insurance premiums would have sustained a large increase as a result of the pure fire, but this isn't, isn't related to the pure fire because of the pool.
Okay. On the, on the same page, can you describe what the Waste Management Act is and why that in- is increased?
Yes, that's a very good question, and and thank you for bringing that up. Uh when we were going through our budget preparation, we met with the city manager's office, um which, as you know, right now oversees waste, our city man, assistant city manager does. And one of the things that he brought to my attention is that we will need to uh comply with a new assembly bill, AB thirteen eighty-three. So this line item includes uh consulting, consulting costs to help us get in compliance. It's, it's, it's quite a complex implementation, another state mandate. Um so we will need some help with this one. Uh what I've included in the budget is seventy thousand dollars for that item. And that is using that restricted funding source, uh the Waste Management Act Fund.
Okay.
Not the general one.
On page sixty-three of our packet, the, the PERS increases dramatically. It, is that a one-off or is that, is that just based on some percentage of how it increases each year?
Could you give me that page number again? I'm sorry.
Page sixty-three.
Uh this is likely uh because of, partially because of salary increases, but also because of the unfunded liability increase. Um safety tends to have the largest percentage contribution. Um and that unfunded liability each year, um public safety is our largest portion of it. Um we're still in the ramp-up years for that unfunded liability. Um when we present to the council, uh uh information and the funding planned on paying that down, we'll be able to provide some added details on why those numbers keep going up. Um but it's, I would say that it's expected to continue and then it will come down.
Okay. And it, is there, there's funding for, um this might be someone else, but there's funding for uh park improvements each year as part of the budget. Is that correct? Can we get a little background on that?
Sure, that's a, that's a, a great question, and it's something that is in my presentation for um our next study session related to the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand of CIP. One of the things, oh no, I I I'd like to answer it because it actually does uh impact our operating budget. One of the things that we did this year was take a look at our capital improvement program and really try to define maintenance projects from capital projects. So a lot of our annual uh programs that we've had in our CIP each year, we've actually moved to the operating budget in public works. Um some of this is street maintenance, some of it is playground replacement, um tree replacement. I think a couple of them are escaping me since I don't have the slide for it. Um but a lot of that, that used to be in our capital improvement program, it is still there. It's just being moved into our operating budget rather than capital.
Okay. So the, the plan is for each year to improve one park, right?
Yes, uh in speaking with public works, um the plan is that there is addition, there is ample funding to be able to do the playground replacement at one playground per year. However, I am going to caveat that, and we'll talk about this a little bit more at our next study session, but that cost of construction, um we don't normally do playground replacements in-house. Um we contract that out, we purchase the, the equipment and uh the company will come out and install it as well, and that cost of of installation is likely to be higher because a lot of folks were were doing a lot of that construction and the cost of supplies is going up. Um so we may have to skip a year. Uh and I don't know, you know, which playground, and it's very possible, I do know that we have existing um capital from previous budgets that's, that's already been uh appropriated. Um but we are looking at pausing some of our CIP temporarily to allow for the cost of construction to come down. So it just, we have money there and it's anticipated it at one per year. However, um it really depends on how much it ends up costing, because it's likely to be a little bit um more than normal.
Okay. Can, can we get the actual increase from OCFA for the next, for the next meeting?
I do have that, if you'd like it. I have it at my fingertips.
Sure.
The actual increase for OCFA for the current year is four point five percent for the service charge. And then, as I mentioned, there's a uh maintenance and a vehicle replacement component. Uh the vehicle replacement component increased by about twenty-four, twenty-four hundred dollars. And that's where that four point uh, four point six percent comes from, but in And that's where that 4.4, 4.6% comes from, but in future years, it is anticipated. Uh, per, per OCFA, the estimate is coming down to about 1.76% in the future.
Okay. So we'll see that in the net following year.
Yeah. And you'll also see that when I present the five-year forecast because those estimates have been incorporated into the, the operating expenses section.
Okay. And, um, I saw that discretionary spending for each district was reduced from 20,000 to 10,000. Uh, and I, uh, these, these funds have been used recently and in previous years for a lot of positive projects. Uh, that directly impact each of our districts. I, I know some of, uh, it has been used for pickleball courts and other, and safety improvements. That we feel is urgent, uh, in our particular district. We redid the Seal Beach entrance sign near Leisure World, but. I just think that discretionary is one area that we, as council members can have a positive impact on our districts. With a safety feature or enhancement to our area and it's relatively small. Amount of money. So I, I just suggest we leave the 20,000 per district in place.
That, that's a very good question. Um, the, the $20,000, um, historically that's been budgeted. Uh, we did reduce that during the pandemic. It was one of our, um, our expenditure reductions where we pulled back. Um, and the 2021 budget did have $10,000 per district and you're absolutely right. Um, there's been a lot of, of good projects that have come out of discretionary spending. Because we're still coming out of the pandemic and because, um, a lot of those. Uh, those discretionary funds have been used for construction tape-related items. Um, we're still recommending keeping it at 10,000, but, but if the council desires. We're, we're absolutely, uh, able to take a look at that. And see if we can, uh, incorporate that before we bring the, the final proposed budget to you, uh, on June 14th. That, that's something that we can take a look at.
I mean, maybe we can discuss it at the next meeting. Briefly. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I just have a, a few comments. First, I, I really want to thank the staff. From the department heads all the way down to whoever three-hole punched the pages and put them in the binder. Um, the, it's very obvious that there was a tremendous amount of thought. That went into preparing this. Um, I think that it, I found it, uh, much easier to follow and understand. And I again applaud the, the changes in the way we, um. We are budgeting. Uh, I think we're very positive and I, I just can't thank everybody enough who was involved. Um, with regard to, um, the unspent, uh, funds. Um, I, I agree with, with Councilman Vera Papa that, uh, you know, the longer. We linger without coming up with a, uh, a good place to spend the money, the value of those funds diminishes rapidly. Um, you know, I know we're, we're hopefully going to be talking soon, sooner than later about, uh, the peer. And you know, right now there's roughly, you know, $1.4 million that is, um, available from the insurance proceeds. That could be used, uh, if we decide that a peer, uh, restaurant is viral, uh, viable and desirable. So I would encourage us to start looking at that and as well as the other, the other funds that, um, you know, are. Sort of languishing. Uh, I definitely want to encourage, uh. You know, keeping, keeping in touch with this new, uh, office specialist position. And I agree with Sandra that at some point, I think it's, it would be a worthwhile full-time position. I mean, uh, you know, as a resident, long before, you know, I was a council member. You know, there's, there's always been the hue and cry of not being able to find out. Information that people need, whether it's for permitting or events or. You know, where do you find this and where do you find that? And I think if, if a strong effort is. Excuse me, let me turn that off. Um, i- i- if. A strong effort is made to make sure that this person, you know, is in fact the information czar. I just can't imagine how, how much of a benefit that's going to be for us. Um, I also would suggest that, uh. Uh, based on the fact that we didn't have, uh, any speakers tonight, that we. Redouble our efforts to, uh, make sure the public knows that the workshops. And the town hall meeting are going to be happening and encourage people to. You know, come in with their questions, you know, I, I would rather have those questions. Brought up here than to be receiving emails and phone calls after the budget is put to bed. Um, with regard to OCFA. Um, there's a lot of things apparently that are going on. It, it seems as though. Um. The board is, has awakened to the fact that. Um, you know, our, as a contract city, our costs keep going up every year. To the point where. Uh, at what point have we reached a point of diminishing returns? In other words, the whole idea of joining a JPA is that you have one fire chief. And, you know, one headquarters and one of everything. Uh, and there's going to be savings. But I think you reach a point where you start having so many cities involved that you start running. Short of the ability to manage that many cities and that many pieces of fire apparatus. Uh, and so forth. So I know that there. There, there's talk now that I'm hearing about ways to reduce costs. For the contract cities and some other ideas that, uh, have been presented to us. So we're going to stay on top of that. And, um, hopefully. We'll, we'll see some movement in that area. So that concludes my comments. Uh, before we adjourn, is there anything that anybody would like to add? Either staff or council?
Um, Mayor, if there's not any additional council comments, what I was going to suggest, since it sounds like there's. A consensus of the council to talk about, um, some of these, um, ongoing reserve funds is. As all of you know, when we, uh, met with each one of you individually this week, um, in our council briefing meetings to. Um, present the, the draft budget and prepare you for the meeting tonight. Um, something that came out of that was really a need as our reserve fund policies and our fiscal policies have changed. Over time and those are, um, outlined for you, starting on page five of the budget document. Was really a need to come back. And have a, a study session, if you will, to really walk through these various policies. And how they've evolved over time and maybe some that we don't, um, even need anymore. Um, and, and really to expand on that discussion. And so since. Like I said, it sounds like there's, there's consensus really to look at some of these. Um, outstanding reserve funds and the concern about diminishing returns on, on the value of that money. Um, by not utilizing it. Uh, maybe we could, um, include that discussion with the study session about reserve and fiscal policies. Um, and if that's, that's, um. Counsel supportive of that, then I will work with, um, Kelly on that and come back to council a little, at a later time for a study session to talk about that. That would be my suggestion.
I would agree personally. Yeah. Any comments by the council?
I concur with that.
Yes, I concur too. I think there. Uh, you should probably call for consensus of opinion.
Okay. Uh, do we in fact have a consensus on this topic?
Could, could Jill please restate coming back at a later, at a later time after when?
Yeah, I, I will talk with Kelly about it. My suggestion was since we had talked about. Um, scheduling a study session, um, to, to really dive into our. Um, reserve fund policy in general and the various fiscal policies that the councils adopted over the years. Um, was adding this discussion, um, that, that has evolved tonight. Regarding the various, um, reserve funds, um, that Kelly, um. Discussed with all of you was that we discussed both of those in conjunction with each other. I don't. I don't have a suggested date right now. Um, but it was, like I said, it was just a, a, a suggestion and a recommendation based on the discussion I was hearing. From a consensus of all of you tonight, so.
So are you, uh, talking about before the budget is approved or?
No, most likely be after. I mean, we've got, since we've got, um, two, we've got another budget study session, May 25th. Uh, to prepare for as well as a, an, a town hall meeting on June 1st. So. Um, what I suggested was talking, uh, with Kelly. Uh, and then we can come back to you with a recommended timeframe on, on having a, another study session to talk about both. The reserve policies as well as, um, our various reserve funds and, and potentially, um, talking about a plan moving forward.
Okay, with that additional information, do we have consensus?
Yes. I, I agree.
Yes. Yeah, I concur. Thank.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then we have concurrence on that. Thank you. And so we come to the end of the. Long evening. Thank everybody for attending and spending the time. I think it was well worth it. So I will now adjourn the city council to Monday, May 24th. 2021 at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. So have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.